Good evening and welcome to the October 1st, 2018 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation, go on to item number three, which is conversation with board regarding one-to-one student device proposal for the 2019-2020 budget. An invite to the table Nancy Rose, the Director of Library Technology Media Library Services. I've got somewhere in that realm, but definitely covering a lot of ground.
Technology and library media.
Welcome and thank you for coming tonight.
I just really, I wanted to have just more of a dialogue than anything. It says on their agenda. So we are every year as part of the capital improvement plan and it'll ongoing at some become an operational thing, adding mobile devices for students and we've been adding at what we think is a palatable rate for the budget. We started in the elementaries with parts of laptops that are now, this year in the process of being replaced. They did four full years for us, which is kind of incredible in their classrooms to be used. We added at the high school after that and the upper elementary and then also middle school. And then we just kind of keep adding and now we're into where we're replacing as well. But the need or the drive to have devices just continues to grow. And at different times when I've been here, we've talked about different curriculum initiatives and the question has come up, you know, do we have what we need to accomplish goals? And so the question that I raised with Marge, Mark and Matt was, are we ready to start looking at one-to-one? And I've been kind of slowly, one-to-one being one laptop per student, or device per student. And I've been slowly working on adding more student devices. And we still have labs because we don't have enough to go around to everybody's for maintaining labs, which we probably will for a while because they do different things. And I guess I wanted to sort of do a litmus test with the board to say, what are your thoughts? To answer questions about what this would mean for us in the district? And also to just sort of have the dialogue around this as an initiative. Because everything I've read about successful rollouts with one-to-one initiatives is the community involvement, community participation, getting input from families. I think it's appropriate to say upfront that, you know, one of the concerns that parents have is overuse of technology, screen time, misuse of technology where you're just replacing what they were doing with paper screen. So you're not necessarily getting any value added. There's a lot of challenges to it as well as benefits. And, you know, going into it with eyes wide open, knowing what our challenges might be. I just wanted to start the conversation and see what's up.
Okay. Are there questions of the board? So surveying Cindy, Andy?
And I'm going to take notes too. No, thank you for coming to the board with this item. I would say what would help me as a board member would be to have, again, some, maybe some research, similar to what we did when we looked at all-day kindergarten or some other, what I would consider to be major initiatives for the district. You know, what are those pros and cons? You know, how were they laid out? What is the, what are any facts that we can glean? You know, Nash, I know the school district where I went to school as a kid, or one in that area, you know, has been using them in a one-to-one for some time. I know there's school districts that are doing that, but I don't know to what extent they are. And then what their experiences have been with that arrangement? And what, again, you know, what are those pros and cons of doing so? But that kind of information would help, I think, to further the conversation with me as well as provide me with additional information to help consider that.
Andy and then Naomi?
So one of the things we've talked about at the table is the concept of blizzard bags. Just incorrectly phrased for what it is, but the idea of being able to create an environment where we don't need to cancel school when we have a snow day. So the question that I would have as you go and research this is, do schools that do one-to-one utilize them for that purpose? And or, you know, does the device that you're obtaining match the needs for that particular grade to be able to achieve something from home? Now, that assumes that the devices can be brought home versus staying in school. So there's a whole lot to go with it. But I know the topics come up a lot as we struggle with snow days. So it'd be good to look at it from that angle.
Naomi?
This is a marvelous topic to be considering. Thank you for bringing it forward. I think the thing that comes to mind first for me as far as things I'd love to know more about are device type or different possible device types. Because saying one device per child is a pretty broad range of possible capacities and uses. And so it would be wonderful to have a sense of what you think would serve the purpose? Or maybe different ideas of what might serve that purpose?
And Brandy?
I think something that it's, I think it's a very important discussion to have. One thing that I would really like to see is a cost-benefit analysis relative to not only financial, but from an educational perspective. What benefit do, does our community and our students receive through the one-to-one that they would not necessarily receive if we didn't have a one-to-one? Or we maintained what we have now? I would also really be interested to see what improvements can be made if we were to go to the one-to-one with streamlining communication between teacher and student and teacher and parent. I think the blizzard bag, for lack of a better way of putting it, as he mentioned, is also certainly something that I would be very interested to see in as well. As well as what age you really start? Are we talking elementary on, you know, K through 12? Or are we specific in our one-to-one? And what are the responsibilities of the student versus the district? Or the family, I should say, as well as the district? So those would be sort of some questions that I would have relative to moving in that direction.
Cindy, had a follow-up?
Yeah, I would have another question, which would be the, maybe the downstream or the impacts intended or unintended possibly, the impacts of such a thing. So for example, library services, you know, how would that, you know, would there be an increase in costs for online library services? And then a decrease for maybe some hard, some of the periodicals that we're ordering and, you know, some things like that? So more textbooks online, what would be, as it relates to that usage, some other costs that would be affected?
Andy?
And to sort of piggyback off of that, talk about refresh timeframes. You know, obviously different devices have different timelines, lifespans. There's how often you have to replace things because of use, but then how often you have to replace things because the technology goes out of date or can't be updated. So understanding that, because we'd all like it to be a one-shot deal and then we're done. I don't think that's true.
That's not true.
So I look at this from a holistic perspective. I think that when you first got the job, we gave you a very hard environment in which to navigate. And you gave us a great technology plan to get us out of the weeds we stuck you in with our Windows 95 machines just barely getting replaced. So and they might have been just getting replaced when you got here. Thank goodness for that. But to that end, you know, maybe a technology plan that would kind of show a comprehensive cost recycling rollout. And then of course, you know, the one thing we talk about every year in your budget message is the need for additional Wi-Fi infrastructure, wiring to support that Wi-Fi. So, you know, it's great to have the technology, but if it creates a burden on our infrastructure where they're not getting out to be able to get to, was it 365, Office 365, just even the most basic things to get those tasks accomplished? Then, you know, we've again created what you would have called, like paperweights. I think it talks about technology being paperweights. I do listen to you every time. So I'm using your terms back on you, but just making sure we're really giving it a strong tool. And I know there's the difference between, you know, tablet versus computer, the yoga-type products they have now. Whether it be Windows versus Chromebooks, the, I know Chromebooks are traditionally a lot less expensive. You know, what's the trade-off? Is there any E-rate type savings that could be made with some of the infrastructure improvements to try to offset some of that? So, you know, where can we, you know, where can we fund it non-traditionally, not just in our operating budget? So, you know, in the technology plan, I think we'd throw all of those ideas together into a strategy that we could use that wouldn't just come to us now, but would be able to foster in future operating budgets. So I think you're coming along to where we were talking about years ago. Because I think every year we ask you, how close are we to one-to-one? Closer, but not there. And we don't know still how close we are. And, you know, when refresh happens, because obviously some stuff that you're using this year is going to be not usable by next year. We know that happens every year. How much of an investment do we need to make? So I think we definitely are interested in that conversation. And then a long-term strategy on how we're going to keep, you know, when you introduce one-to-one, how do you maintain one-to-one and do it afford, you know, where we can integrate into the operating budget without creating a spike in the number that we put out? So all very challenging topics and, you know, but you're coming to us, obviously up for the challenge. Or else, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, a very process-oriented thing for us to, I think, be able to adopt that idea. But a good idea that we should be vetting very thoroughly.
Well, and that's why I wanted to have the dialogue here. And I did have a survey done in, with the tech, just on the tech listserv in the state. And there was one done last year as well. And what's interesting is to answer to some of the questions that have come up. Because I thought, well, I'll just sort of look at the data and put it together in a nice pie chart. And it's really not possible because districts have done K-12, 111, 210, 5 to 8, 6 to 12. It's literally all over the board what different districts have done. There's a lot of Chromebooks. There's Chromebooks with touch and without, with touch being more common touchscreen at the lower levels. iPads at the K-12 level or K-1 level before they really are keyboarding. A lot of districts have Chromebooks through sort of the middle range and then they get into the higher level and they have Windows laptops. So there's a lot of theme and variation, but what's interesting is from every scenario, the people involved have little stories, things to share. And so be careful about this and be careful about that. Professional development has been the common theme. And like you said, infrastructure and making sure that you beef up your ability to manage those devices on your network. Filtering for use both in the district and at home in case devices do go home. The places where devices go, the ages where devices go home ranged from fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade to only high school. Still, you know, very much a selection across the board and it kind of just varied who was allowed to do what. And then another big question is the management for damage, like fix-break. So if they're insured, if they're, if you just buy extra devices and do your own repairs, how do you make sure you've got parts and you're qualified? So all of these are different parts of that dialogue that's already occurring. And I think it's a matter of sort of assessing the lay of the land, looking at what our goals are as a district. And then going forward with some kind of a plan, knowing, you know, what that budgetary hit would be as well as the training. Because to me, that's going back to the paperweight idea. If teachers aren't comfortable using devices, then they won't get used and then where will we be? So training and also making sure that teachers have the same device that they're working with with their kids, which I hadn't necessarily thought about, but you know, I have, we have lots of like home cows, computers on wheels. We have parts all through the district and teachers have access to one of those, but that isn't necessarily their, they don't have one that's theirs that they take home and work with and use to prepare lessons. And as I was thinking about that when I read that today, I thought, you know, that actually makes a tremendous amount of sense. Because then you're going into your classroom with the device that everybody's on. Everybody's on the same plane. So there was a lot of really, really useful information and it was interesting just to see. You know, there's a few districts that have been going at this in New Hampshire for five or six years. And so they have a lot of lessons learned and share. And that's the nice thing about working in education is people are free with their lessons. They will share what they've learned. So and I just, I think it's useful to hear what your questions are. And then I guess my next question would be, what would be a reasonable process or format? You know, I can pull together my findings from that research for both at the national level and at the New Hampshire level and put it together in a, you know, hopefully digest report and share, you know, what some of the cost-benefit numbers may look like. Where are there areas that are potential savings that gets into the work Mark does with groups? Is there savings on consumables? Is that what would be a reasonable next step? Something like that produced for you or for me to come back? I don't, I want to keep this dialogue going because hopefully if people are paying attention or watching, there may be some feedback forward of what those are.
Naomi?
I think that sounds great. That's a lot of information that would be helpful. I think that from what others at this, as this table have said, that makes the most sense to me. I think that we have to establish that it would be beneficial before we can even move into other steps to do with it. I have my own mini soapbox in regards to that, and that is that the research regarding device use is ongoing. And I think I've mentioned this once early on the board. There's very little evidence that shifting to textbooks that are wholly electronic is necessarily beneficial in its own right. It has advantages, there's no question, but I'd really love for us to know where it would fall and why, and therefore why we'd be pursuing it.
Brandy?
I, one question that I have is when you're doing your research, is there an age group where it's, does it negatively affect a certain age group and positively affect a different age group? Meaning are younger students, would it actually deter them from learning some of the the basics, the foundation of whether it's math or spelling or writing and all of that? Where when you're in high school, I can see where, you know, definitively, that makes a tremendous amount of sense to me. So I would be interested to see from an age group as well, not necessarily district-wide, but is there specific cost-benefit research on age groups versus just a blanket? The only other question that I have is, is when districts do the one-to-one, is it fully funded by the school? Or is there certain criteria where a parent could provide their child or children with whatever the district chooses for that tool? Whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook? Is there certain districts that do it where it's a combination of a parent responsibility as well as a school responsibility?
So Bedford, I think, is the only one that currently reported back on this last year's survey of that type of a model. And they, the parents buy the device. It is, they have the option of buying into a maintenance program so that if something happens to it, they can take care of, the school will help take care of the repair. Or if they don't buy into that, then they're responsible for the upkeep of. And that's been in place. I think they've been doing that for three or four years. And that went through a process that the community was involved. The one thing that the tech director there reported back that I thought was interesting is that by the time they get to 12th grade, they've really kind of stopped buying devices. They've stopped kind of determining what devices would be good because by that time seniors want the one that they want. So you kind of end up with a little theme and variation, which I think is one of the concerns with like a bring your own device or buy your own device model is getting too much variation because then it can make the management of a classroom, excuse me, if everybody's on a little bit, something very different. So that's one that I'm aware of. Mostly the funding came out of operational budget. They might have, it kind of varied on whether they used like savings from, one mentioned healthcare costs went down, so they took advantage. And in some cases, it almost sounded like they had a windfall, so they jumped. May or may not be the right thing, but for some districts, I think it's what got them off the dime and they moved forward. But they tend to be operational. And one district did try to do a bring your own device within a parameter and then they backed off of it. He didn't say why. He just said that they had been doing that and then they stopped. But I can check out and find out what, because something must have happened to make it not ideal.
Okay. Cindy?
Well, and I think that setup can be tricky too, because we're a different community than Bedford is. Or, you know, very much so, as well as the overall concept of public education and how we are here to serve all students. And so those are the couple of things, my initial thoughts regarding that tech setup.
Yeah, and they had a model for taking care of the students that, like if hardship was an issue and it was based on the numbers for free and reduced. There's metrics involved. And the other thing that is, I think, useful to note is several districts mentioned that they had wireless hotspots, like a Verizon MiFi, that they would lend out. So if there was a need, if the devices went home or were going home for a project and there wasn't internet access, there was a device that they could check out. There's a company that, I don't, they kind of put like a skin on the service that's provided by the MiFi so that it's filtered, you can control. So it's still, when the district is providing that network to the family, it's still filtered. So it still falls within the legal requirements that we're required to adhere to. So there's ways that you can accommodate things like that, getting to your point exactly, so.
So the only question I also have was, I know that when you first came on to be able to catch up to the times that there was a lease to really just get a ground swell of technology refresh? Lease versus buy, you know, doing that analysis as well. And I think it was, we could buy them out for a dollar at the end of the lease and we definitely did a lot of that. So, you know, those are the things I think that will help us in, you know, what your timeline is for implementation. Are you looking to do this in one budget year? Are you looking to do it over a number of years with a lease? But, you know, put the technology in in one year? So those are things that'll be very helpful to us as you're planning out too. So we know the impact upfront, but both with technology and finance, so. Okay. Cindy, still?
And again, I would say I appreciate you coming to us because obviously to put together this type of a proposal or information is a lot of work. So it makes complete sense to vet it by the board. And I think it was very smart to do so.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. So what I would say, because this kind of came to us with a lot of ideas that are probably swimming in our heads. If there are any questions that come between now and our next meeting or that you want Nancy to have that information, email the superintendent, copy me. And then we can have Nancy Fab with some additional follow-on thoughts that might come up. Because this is definitely something that's a new concept and we need to keep thinking about the questions we might have. Because the communication plan for it, if it's something we do decide to do, is going to be very aggressive. So it's going to have to be. So I appreciate it.
Yep. Thanks for the time.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
We are on to item number four, which is the school board approval of request for payment for security cameras from the Public School Infrastructure Fund. I turn it over to Marge.
Thank you. So I think it would be good for the public to just go back to a time when we had the opportunity to apply for such a grant. And that was in October of 2017 when school districts could apply for funds from what was known as the Public School Infrastructure Trust Fund, which was established by Governor Sununu because at the end of the year, there was $19 million left in state surplus. And so it was thought that districts could apply for grants that had to do with security issues or high-speed internet service or life or safety issues. And so Matt, on the district's behalf, applied for two separate grants. One went for that mitigation, which you remember, we were granted. And this last school year, we received a grant of $180,000 to help offset the cost of that project. And then the second grant that we received had to do with reimbursement for security cameras. And we weren't able to go forward to ask for the reimbursement until the project was complete. That's one of the pieces. It has to be complete. You have to take pictures of what you've acquired and have the respective invoices. And so what was purchased during the summer was 18 cameras, specifically three internal cameras at the middle school, 12 internal cameras at the high school, one external camera at the high school, and then two cameras on the lower baseball field. So 18 cameras in total. And so because that action has been taken, you now have in front of you the paperwork that has to be submitted to the Department of Ed, specifically the Commissioner of Education. And I've given you the request for payment form. You've seen that it's been highlighted for you. And one of the expectations is that there would be a formal vote by the board. In this case, you see that the award was 80% of the actual expenditure. So the actual request for payment is $38,185.60. Hopefully that you will approve the grant. The second piece that needs to be accomplished is that all of you need to sign and date it. That's five board members. And we will submit that along with this paperwork and hopefully have the reimbursement by the end of October, which will be very beneficial to the cause. So I thank Matt publicly for submitting the two grants on our behalf. And I'm very pleased that that infrastructure fund was there and that we were one of the recipients.
Thank you. So with that, we will take a moment to sign the documents at the end of the meeting? Or do you need it done right now? Oh, we should probably take that first, huh? It's good times.
We should take the vote and then I'll just pass the affidavit along and you can just sign it and then just bring it back to me.
That's fair. So based on the idea of a great idea of having a vote, we should have one of those. Sorry about that, guys. So Naomi?
Just double checking on the form that I'm looking at. It looks like it needs a notary public. Is that?
And I spoke with ours and Paula Williams is the one. And what she said is, because she does not need to see you in person, she knows about the grant. If you will sign and date it tonight, she'll notarize it tomorrow morning. I already had that conversation with her today.
So with that, I will entertain a motion. Andy? If you weren't, I was going to make it, so go ahead.
I move that we accept the grant that is stated in this letter and we authorize the board to sign on behalf to accept it. Oh, for 80% of the reimbursement, which is $38,185.60.
Thank you. Is there a second to that great motion? Naomi? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Excellent. And we will sign as we go along. And I will go to item number five, which is the utilization of the Brentwood property for 2018-19. And I will give it back to Matt and Marge.
Do you want me to go? Around a week and a half ago, myself, Tom Tussell, invited the fire marshal, John Manuelli, who brought the building inspector and the new health inspector to go for a tour of the Brentwood facility that we purchased this year. in order to go through the building and tell us basically, or give us some directions on how we would like us to proceed with the potential utilization of the building in a limited capacity before, you know, we start talking about anything more than that. John went through, we spent a couple hours there, Nancy Rose was there, too, to look at it for a possible site for STEM activities. Also, I want to mention. And John's last recommendation was for us to get a certified fire engineer, and there is indeed such a thing, to walk through the building and write us a detailed report. He said, because we don't have, I'll just give you some of the anecdotal statements that were made. He said, because we don't have a full sprinkler system, we could never use this as a school, if you wanted to occupy and use it as a school. It can only be used on a limited basis and for office use only. However, to get to that point, and this is what he wants verified by the certified fire engineer that we may hire, given your permission to do so as the next step. He mentioned that the fire alarm panel is old and out of date, needs replacement. All the smoke alarms need replacement throughout the entire building, so. Fire alarm panel, fire alarms, you can look at them, you can tell they're very old. It's kind of obvious, once you're in there, the panel is also very old. Although it's still, it's still functioning, but he would want it replaced and upgraded. All the holes, there were some holes in the sheet rock here and there. He'd like those repaired. He would like any missing ceiling tiles, and there were a few here and there repaired, replaced. Also, the ramps on the outside of the building, because of the, basically, the humidity that was going on. One of the ramps is literally kind of buckled. They were just old. I don't even know if it was pressure-treated lumber that they used. But both sets of ramps need to be replaced on the exterior of the building. And then after that, we could use it as, in limited capacity, for office-type situations. So, fire alarm panel, ramps, holes in ceilings, outlet covers, he mentions, there's some outlet covers that are missing. It doesn't sound, well, the fire alarm panel sounds like it could be something, as far as an expenditure goes. But it just takes a lot of time to go through that. And we'd be looking to see what the engineers' report, the fire engineer's report would would direct us to do. And that would be kind of our guiding plan for, if you wanted to use it in a limited capacity before researching and going forward with a larger plan to turn it into a potential central office at some point in the future. But that's the information that I have right now.
Okay, so far, I see. Naomi, stand?
Could you contextualize this a little bit in regard to the pre-purchase inspection and other inspections that we've had done?
In the inspection that was done by Brian Hanson, team engineering, the last two pages of that inspection report that was online for everybody to see, it definitely listed those items. It did list the fire alarm panel. I think around $64,000. That was to be done in year one after we own it. It was a it's like a 30-page report, pictures, everything like that, that we put out there. So this was kind of known to us, that it's a potential issue.
Are there other questions? Andy?
So if Suresk had continued with the building and its function, and leasing it to Nashua, was there a risk that the fire marshal would come and tell them they couldn't do what they're doing?
Absolutely.
Just asking.
Yeah, just giving you my honest answer, yeah.
So based on the steps that we've taken, we cannot use that building for anything unless we do those changes?
Well, so far, those are the changes.
Right, but I mean, but at a minimum.
The fire marshal came up with at a minimum. However, the fire engineer may say, okay, how are you gonna use this building? We're gonna use it this way. All right, maybe you just replace the smoke detectors, and you're good, and the panel is still all right. See, this is what John, the fire marshal, would like the fire engineer to put down on paper for him as a guiding document also.
Right, and just to complete my thought here, so obviously, the intent, and the reason we went through this, was we know that we're going to go and try to do the right thing by this property, to be able to use it for what our goal was, which is a combined SAU sped solution for the district. And regardless of what path that takes, I believe my personal intent, speaking for one member, was to put as little as we could into this building and be able to utilize it during that interim period. And do we know what the cost to have a fire engineer come and do this work is?
Ballpark, $3,000 to $4,000.
How's that, Andy? Cindy?
So I have two comments. One is relating to Matt's update, and my question is if it, some of the requirements are based on if there's students there versus adult education, if there was any kind of a difference, like if we used it for adult education temporarily, if it's subject to the same type of requirements? Not sure, but just a thought.
Okay, well, adult education is different than having schoolchildren there, so. You could utilize that if you did, right now, if we're taking what the fire marshal said, and let's pretend that I have to do everything he said. He says, I'm not certain you have to do, that's why I want you to hire the engineer. Then yes, he would have to do those upgrades. Definitely the ramps, fire alarm panel, new smoke detectors, holes and cracks, and whatnot, before you could use it for any purpose. So that would include adult ed also.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the second thing is just in response to Andy's comment about preparing it for the SAU Student Services Building. And I don't think that we vetted that. And I think that, you know, we've discussed it, but it's not something that that we've said that was the purpose, although it was definitely something for consideration. We were going to purchase this building, and then because of this opportunity, rare, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to purchase it, and then we were gonna discuss. So I just wanted to clarify, I think, that comment.
Yeah, Marge has something to follow with that.
Right, that's exactly right. And we had what I would call a general first discussion with a member of the Planning and Building Committee, that being Gage Barry and you, to just say where are we? So we kind of had the beginning. And what the board said is that it was interested in seeing if we could get into short-term utilization. So while we would perhaps explore having a general contractor come to talk in terms of renovation vis-à-vis a new building or whatever, that in the interim, what might be done? That was the prompt to the fire department, because remember, before, as Matt pointed out, we did team engineering, which was kind of an assessment of the whole, but it wasn't into the fire specifications. And so when John Manuelli comes to the fore, that now is really taking a look at it from a point of view of a school system using it. So we did two things. We had Matt conducting the inspection with John. John's recommendation is to go forward with a fire inspector to get more finite, to do some costing. Meantime, I, with the leadership team, was talking about how it might be utilized. So I think that's the second part to this, for you to hear what the initial comments were by the leadership team. And what I said to them is, this would be thinking in terms of 1819, and perhaps a bit of 1920, because to place anything on the warrant, we said it would be another year out. So perhaps it might be beneficial for you to hear those comments and so on, because we really don't feel that we can go a next step without you weighing in on what you think. So the first thing that the leadership team mentioned was the adult ed program. And we have a lot of programs, and of course, this is without talking to the director, who is Laura Bobbitt, the administrative assistant at Reed's Ferry, is the overseer of the program. So we didn't have her weigh in. It was just a thought, and of course, I think that's been said at this table as well. Also, Nancy, as Nancy Rose, as Matt pointed out, went along on the tour, because what our our intent is, is to have a number of Lego leagues from all of the schools. And one of the things that we've heard loud and clear is it's very difficult for kids to be in the process of building something in the Lego League, and then having to take it down. So if you're in a certain space, you know, that space has to be utilized the next day for something else. So in a space such as the Brentwood property, you could actually have a designated room where your group would be building this project, and you could shut the door, and that would be that. So I think if everything were perfect, it would be wonderful for each of these teams to have a room for its project, robot, or otherwise. Believe it or not, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts utilize all four elementary buildings, and we're very good about sharing our space. And the thought was, again, with multiple rooms, wouldn't it be great if the Scouts could have a particular room that was designated for their needs, rather than, again, coming in and out? A thought was, in one of the smaller rooms, we could perhaps do some educator training, probably not up over 30 or 40 people. I mean, you've walked the space. It's not large, but some of our trainings, again, were giving over space in a building, so that would be good. Actually, a district art show, it was thought it would be great to hang a lot of projects up on the wall. And lastly, in the very small gym, might there be the possibility of a team when it was needing a place for a particular kind of practice? That it might go there, given that the gym space is just, you know, spoken for all the time. That was the first plus. So you can see, it's got, I would say, a preponderance of students, student thought, other than the adult ed and the training. But I thought that was a good, first good rendering.
Are there any other questions? The only thing, oh, did you? I'm sorry. Andy, did you have your hand up? Okay. The only thing I was looking at was defining classroom or office use versus classroom use, because I know that some of the things that we no longer could do once Superstorm Sandy came through was use the basement space to evaluate children, do, you know, those kind of, you know, you know, student service evaluations. Would that be considered classroom use? Would that be considered office use? And, you know, because I look at that gymnasium as a place that would kind of replace that, the mini gym that comes with that building. So would that be, you know, how would it be defined by a fire engineer and a fire marshal? So it's not something you have to answer tonight, because we are not by trade fire engineers nor marshals. But that'd be a question I had, because I know that's something that we've had a void, especially if you have children with emotional distress, you know, that we do have in our buildings, for evaluation, that we could still have a place for them, too, long-term, short-term as well.
I would say that John, as the overseer of Student Services, when he wasn't sure what the space was going to look like, or whether it was going to be available at all, that is, the Brentwood property, he worked with principals to come up with other possibilities for this year. So when we talked about this, he did not come forward to express interest from an evaluation point of view, or whatever, in the short term. And I would say, just work with principals to create space, because he just wasn't sure of its availability. And as it turns out, I mean, if you were to tell us to go forward with a fire inspector, just looking that we're sitting at the first of October, I doubt that we really would be able to put anything in place, given that there would be probably some things that we would need to do. So we really probably couldn't utilize it until the second semester, I would say.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Andy?
So two things. One, I'll make, I'll do the second thing. The first thing I was gonna do, second, because I was gonna make a motion about authorizing the fire inspector. I was gonna do that. I'm assuming we have to do a motion for that.
Probably a good idea.
Okay.
Seems to be all the rage tonight.
Right. No, it's, it's appropriate thing to do. But the first thing is, is that we've been dancing around this flagpole for a while now. And I know that we need to set up time with the Planning and Building Committee. I want this board to put its sort of stake in the ground, it says, it is our intent to use this facility to address the SAU sped building, so we can start moving with planning and building to come up with the options. I thought that we had gotten close to that, but apparently not, at a meeting, two meetings ago. But I'd also like to hear in from the board to see if we can do that, because there's pushback from people saying, you bought this building, you have no idea what you're doing with it. I think we have to remind people that what we paid for the building is what the land is worth in and of itself. Forget the building sitting on top of it, which we can argue what its actual value is today. But the key is, is we have this property, and we need to start the ball rolling for what we're gonna do with it. So I think that the first thing I'd like to do is ask the board to chime in and take a stand as to, to essentially charge the district through the planning and building to come up with what the options are to be able to use that facility, or that site, as to address the SAU sped building need.
Yeah, I always saw hands going up on that comment. So Cindy, I think yours is up?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question would be, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I mean, obviously, I do think it's a consideration, that property, in my opinion, you know, that it's a viable, or it should be considered as an option. But, you know, do we make that decision first? Or I know that, I know the Planning and Building Committee took a tour of it, but they've been looking at other things, too. So at what point do we say we want to go with this option? Or await some feedback from the Planning and Building Committee? I mean, that's my question.
I think as, you know, I have, and I have served on Planning and Building, so I definitely have that perspective as well. But I think we are the governing body, or the board. What do we want this property to be? I kind of see where Andy is going. I'm trending that way. Do we want to use the existing building, or do we want to use the existing site? Those are two different charges, as far as I'm concerned. Well, but for us to decide. Because honestly, we're the ones that are going to have to
But do we know? I mean
But that's, but that's the point. I think what we need to do is, when we build this charge, we say, we don't want you to conclude what we need to do. We want you to tell us what the options are. So that's what I would say the charge needs to be, so that we, as a governing board, who has to stand behind this decision on camera in public to the voters on Election Day, can do so with a clear focus. So to me, the option, I've got you, Naomi, to me, the option is, you know, when we do design this charge, is I'd say, we want, you know, you to look at the existing infrastructure and see how that would be designed, and what we should do with, you know, how that would meet the needs of the district, versus, you know, do we raise the property, look at the location as the ideal opportunity, and say, what do we do with the new facility? So I think it goes both ways. And even if we use it as a staging, as we tear down the two facilities to make a new facility, so having that be an option as well. So it's used, just as it's temporary to be in the green and the blue house, be temporary in the red house, where we can use the sites where the green and the blue were, to do something more long-term and viable. The one thing I think is a board that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is we need to do something right the first time, and not create a series of Band-Aids to get it out of our hair and into somebody else's. We're not the kick-the-can type. Let's hope that we don't become that. But do it with what I would call thorough vetting and understanding of the pros and cons, just like we do with every, every decision we make. And that includes the existing structure, and that includes a new structure. I think both need to be vetted. That's my personal opinion. Naomi, you had your hand up?
I have no problem at all with restating that, that in this entire process, we're looking for a place to meet these needs for the SAU and the sped needs. And this is one very strong possibility. I mean, certainly, we don't know exactly what will happen yet, and something else could come up, but yeah, we've talked about it throughout the process, and we should be looking at ways to see whether that can happen, and what would be the best way to make it happen.
Gotcha. Cindy?
I agree with Naomi. I mean, I don't know that, I'm at the I agree with Naomi. I mean, I, I don't know that, I'm at the point where I would say you must do something, you must do this on this property. Give me A or B because there's already been a lot of work done for some potential other options. And it may very well be that we end up using this property for that. But I don't know that I'm willing to make the charge to say definitely use this property for this and negate any other options that we might have.
Okay. Andy? Oh, Naomi? Brandy? Then Andy?
I, I struggle with this one and I'm going to be very honest about that. I, I would err on the side of wanting to understand what it would take to remove the building from the site. How much would that cost to remove the building versus fixing, I think you said sixty-four thousand? Did I understand that correctly? The fire?
Well, that was the estimate on the team engineering report, sixty-four thousand dollars for the fire alarm panel.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for just the fire alarm panel, it's sixty-four thousand. What would the cost be to remove the building entirely from the site? And from that point, what would the cost be to build new based on our current need for SAU and sped? As well as understanding what we could also potentially use a building that we're designing for, that the district has a strong need for. So where are we lacking in our infrastructure? That if we were to build new, we could also house in this area as well. So I think for me to decide and stick the fork in the ground or however he phrased it, I would need to really understand the costs associated with tearing it down, building new and what other areas we can utilize that infrastructure for, as well as understanding what it would realistically cost to make it usable. And I'm, I, I weigh on, I lean on the side of suggesting that, you know, maybe the building's had its day. And we really, in order to invest in our future, I agree, do it right the first time. I'm not a Band-Aid person. I don't like Band-Aids and I certainly rip them off. I don't slowly tear. So if we're going to, you know, stand for something, I kind of really believe that we need to realistically look at how our money can be best used. And I'm not sure it's creating or adding more Band-Aids or gauze or any other form of medical need to make that building usable.
Okay. Thank you. Brandy? Brandy's on, Andy's on. This is going to be a tough one for me for a while, settling in.
So first of all, the reason for my, the motion I didn't make yet was to authorize bringing the fire, fire engineer in to get that information. What is it? Do we really need to have the fire, the fire panel? Is there more than that? To see what the cost is to make the building usable. So that, that was one of the motions I was going to be because we're speculating right now. We don't know. And I agree with you. You don't want to spend money, you're going to throw it away. Right? So one question would be, can you take that fire panel and use it in a new building? You know, take it down, put it in a closet, use it when you're ready. I mean, that's thing. But the other piece of this, and so there are probably four different op, four, five, six options that have already been placed of what to do with an SAU sped building. There's the property behind Master Cola. In between the red building and Master Cola Elementary, there's a bunch of woods. We own that. So there's a plan in place that exists that actually was in front of the voters three years ago, four years ago? Can't remember. To tear those woods down and build a brand new building right behind it. That was before we knew that Brentwood was going to be available, right? So that was the, the proposal that was there. There was another proposal we ran at one point to use the O'Gara Drive property where the skate park is and the tennis courts and stuff. There's actually a proposal that Matt put together with an architect back in the spring of what it would cost to rebuild the red building on its current footprint, you know, what it would cost to do that. The other option that we haven't looked at yet is bulldoze it down, potentially use the existing footprint and do, and, and build it from scratch, right? I think that the planning and building has got, has done a lot of work in terms of what the needs are for those two functions within the district. So there is some stake in the ground that we've already done. There needs to be updated information around sizing and needs based on current, because it was like at least six, seven years ago that it was done. So that needs to be refreshed. What's the right size, conference rooms, you know, evaluation rooms and things like that. I think the important part is, is not, not to reach an end game here, but to charge the planning and building committee with adding the Brentwood property to their list of options and looking at what all the feasible options are, whether it's using what's there, using the proposal that Matt's got, tearing it down, using the foundation, tearing the foundation down, use it. Or maybe that building doesn't work, but we need to go through that diligence. And I think what we need to do is, is a board sort of authorized planning and building to go that next step. Because when I said that we want to do whatever we're going to do in April of 2020, is to give us time to make the right decision. So I think we rush to something now, we may not have researched it enough, we'll come up with a number that's not appropriate or, or whatever like that. So for me, the motion, the motion is, is to enable the planning and building committee to look at this property as, along with all the others, as to what, what makes sense for the SAU sped, reevaluate the current needs and things like that. That would be what my motion is. It's not, do we use the building or do we tear it down? It's to add that in, knowing that the land is, we paid for what the land is worth, right? So in my mind, the structure of the building is either something we get rid of or something we use, but it's sort of like the extraneous pieces.
I saw Matt was going to pipe in earlier and then-
I'm all set.
Okay. And then Cindy had her hand up.
And maybe I misunderstood because I was thinking that it was going to be very limited in scope that way. And I also thought the planning and building committee was already looking at that property. And I know there was a tour that went through, but I'm perfectly fine with that motion to make it on the record.
Considering on the liaison into the planning, building, my only knowledge is they toured it. But there's been no planning and building committee meaning to do anything beyond that.
Okay. No, I would be in favor of that motion to add it publicly as an option for consideration. And with all of our other options that we've looked at. So we come up with really the best plan for what we will soon, I think, have a very imminent need for.
Okay. So with that, I believe you wanted to make a motion about some fire engineering stuff.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion on what we just, on the charge we're giving to planning, building? Do we need to write it down? For the planning and building?
Okay.
What we just discussed.
Okay. Um, because I thought you were going to go with the fire engineering thing first.
Well, I, I, if we need to have a motion for the both parts, I can do that.
Okay.
But let's do the simpler one first. Let's do the fire one first. So I want to make a motion to authorize the assistant superintendent of business or whatever his title is these days. I got it right.
You got it.
To, to bring in a fire engineer to look at the Brentwood property, to evaluate what the occupancy components are required, what, what, what things are required for occupancy to utilize that structure in its current state? Is, you know, sort of as low, low point as possible.
Okay. And I'll, I will second that just for fun. Because I never second stuff anymore. So, so on that note, I agree with you completely. So I think, you know, let's, let's figure out what we have our hands on. And then we can make better informed decisions regardless. He's going to come back with good data and that's what, how we make our best decisions. So, so with that, does anyone else have a comment on the motion? Seeing them, we'll put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries five zero zero. And did you want to continue with your thoughts?
So the second motion I'd like to make is that the board authorize the planning and building committee to, to formally evaluate the Brentwood property. And I'll use property with quotes around it because it's not necessarily driven to the building and estate, but just what we have available to us as one of the options for the combined SAU sped building. I'm debating whether I want to put a timetable on this. We'll just, and we'll-
Andy, can I guide you a little bit on this?
Right. Because I've, I have what I want to say, but I'm not sure it's, so go ahead.
What I think we want to do is charge the planning and building to commit, committee to look at all options that have been considered, including the Brentwood property with refreshing updates based on current, current conditions. And, and allow for, because obviously some of the plans we had put together years ago, the prices have changed and some of the needs may have been reevaluated. So with that, I think we want to take a, a fresh look at this project to include the option of this, this property. So I would say just do a, a refresh of, of the, the research. And up to and including using this property as a built.
And I completely agree. So you, you were making the motion, which is fine.
Well, I was, I was guiding the motion if that's how, where you were going with it.
Yeah, you could decide who's going to make it. But my only question is, do we put a-
We do need a timeline. I, I think we want to do it for after the April election because it's not going to be on our warrant. So let's look at that and give them time to reevaluate and re-
So what about?
For a second meeting in April even. Meeting after the- So-
So the first meeting after the April ele-
So that will give you, would that give enough time, you think? Because a lot of it's been-
Certainly, I believe. But, but, but the charge is to come up with, with proposals.
Right. All viable, let's evaluate all viable options.
And come with a recommendation based on-
Well, they don't even have to, as far as I'm concerned, come with a recommendation. We could do that.
Come with, come with, what the options are.
Yep. So they can compile the viable options for this SAU sped office.
So if that's not a sausage, a motion made like sausage table, I have no idea what is.
You know I hate that term. But yeah, that, that would be it. Just come to the table with all the viable options being vetted.
So to, to summarize, authorizing and planning and building to return in, by the first meeting after the election in April with what the viable plans are to address the SAU and sped building needs with refreshed information on what the, the district's needs are, as well as cost information in adding the Brentwood property to the list of viable options.
Right. I'll second that just because I helped you. So on that note, is, are there any comments to the motion? Naomi?
This may be entirely unnecessary, but a possible friendly addition would be, or that they provide us with a timeline if it's not enough. In other words, what if they need more time than that?
And it would be April fifteenth, by the way.
That's a really bad notion.
Which is tax day, which we love tax day. So, so on that note, the IRS loves us that day. So on that note, if there are no other feedback, we'll put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries five zero zero. And the planning and building chair is in the audience as well. So we wish him luck and an enjoyable, enjoyable project. We are on to item number six, which is the individual board member's thoughts on the 2019, 2020 budget. At our last meeting, we discussed having board messages ready to go over at our meeting. We'll take those messages, compile it and we'll make a collective board message that can be provided to administration for budget season. So historically, we've gone end to end. I don't know if you want to go over your budget message first. I know you're first, but if you wanted to yield to Naomi, because you are the freshman, we'd be glad to do that. That's fine. You bet. So Naomi, I'll let you go first.
Mine is relatively brief. There were three things that came to the surface for me when I was thinking about this. The first is I really like the focus that there has been in recent years on maintenance and upkeep. As far as the roofs, as far as the, the buildings, as far as all these other pieces, the multi-year plan has been marvelous. And I'd like to see that kind of effort continue. Replacement furniture and cycles, all the things that you've already been doing. I, I think that, that it's wonderful and should continue. Similarly, continued support for the tools and curriculum for differentiated learning, which has been a movement we've been doing as well, to make sure that we are supporting those efforts through the budget, where it makes sense to do so. And last but not least, again, this is not something you have not been doing, but fiscal prudence. I think that in this point in time, it's important to people as well as to me that spending remain relatively level. Now, when I say that, then I include inflation in that. So I expect that costs go up a little bit every year simply because the cost of money changes. But apart from that, the idea of staying, holding the line where we can.
Cindy?
I would like to see budgeting that best preserves and improves the quality of education that we offer in this district while being sensitive to the burden our taxpayers face. I'm open to and encourage innovative and creative approaches to accomplish this goal. Similar to my message last year, I would like to see continued focus on the capital improvement plan and attention to the maintenance of our existing facilities. I'd like to avoid kicking the can as much as possible. For example, that heat well, that, you know, we, when I was on the budget committee, that that was an example of something that really got kicked and far out. But I haven't seen much of that in recent years. I remain focused and concerned on items such as student and staff safety, communications and IT infrastructure. I'd like administration to remain focused on the facts throughout the process and I encourage as many details as possible regarding budget expenditures. For example, including the breakouts in the budget line items, which we've requested for in the past, particularly in the more complex areas such as the high school. And that has also steadily been improved over the last couple of years. I'd like to explore or continue to explore a couple of items for this year or the near future. Again, the turf field, which is on our CIP and given the lack of proper athletic resources such as fields, the turf field would help us be able to, to work with that strength that we have, or at least get additional usage of. And second, using the facts that we are gaining regarding building temperature so that we can best set the proper infrastructure for the Honeywell potential initiative. I seriously wonder what we can do to improve the temperature, particularly in the second levels of our brick buildings, the upper elementary and the high school. I remain concerned about those temperatures and a student that is too hot will not learn. A teacher that is too hot, you have a whole classroom. And that gets back to the core, I think, of what we do here, which is to provide that education that our students are here for. The other one is options for the Brentwood building and any associated costs, which we discussed this evening. Again, and then options for central office and student services and any associated costs. The final item is the transportation for out-of-town athletics, such as home games and practices that are at fields or locations that are outside the village of Merrimack. I have significant safety concerns. I'd like to thank district administration and associated district employees in advance for the work you will all put into this very important and valuable exercise.
Thank you. Andy?
Look, she wrote this down. Mine's scratched on the back of a three by five card. So the first thing I want to do is, is I want us to continue to look, as we did this year. We do an operating budget and we try to put things within separate warrant articles when we can. So I'd like the administration to continue that, that approach because I think it, it does allow a lot more transparency into what is we're trying to do in, in terms of budgeting. I'd also want, like, as part of the evaluation, to come up, to, to have administration present us with what a truly flat budget would be based on, operating budget based on last year, including incorporating the costs of, of increased teachers pay. I want to see, take to, almost to the exact penny, what would it take to get to that operating budget from last year to this year, based on what we know. Now, I know that that may mean a reduction, but I want to know what it means. I'm not saying necessarily that that's what I want because I know that in order to do things that the administration will want, likely increases in the budget based on, on, on inflation and those costs. But I believe that one of the exercises that would be helpful to the voters to understand the decisions we make at the table is what you lose if you start trying to cut back that far. There's a belief that it should be flat, if not reduced. So what I'd like to do is have an option that says, this is what we don't get if we do it. And then we as a board will make a decision based on what that is. I know it's, it's different than what I've given in the past, but I think it's, it's a way to show that the board is at least looking at those options. And if we make a decision, then we- it's a way to show that the board is at least looking at those options, and if we make a decision, then we've made a decision for everybody to see. Um, the, the other thing I'd like to see somewhat related to that is, when we do our, um, our teacher's contract, when we did two and a half, two years ago, we did the teacher's contract, we said what the additional cost would be for the first year and then estimated costs for the next two years, based on the increases. I'd like us to be able, as part of our discussion around the budget, to give an idea of what that actual increase would be. Now, I, I talked to Matt a little bit, explain what I mean. As we go through and have teachers retire and bring in lower-cost teachers, the, the seven hundred and some odd thousand that we had planned may not be the actual money that we, we end up increasing it by, based on the, the contract's third year. So what I'd like to see is, how are we as a district making progress to bring in teachers that are younger, not quite as expensive as we retire the, the more expensive teachers, to see whether that's having an impact on that. It's, it's, again, we could talk offline if you're looking for more, you're giving me this look.
No, so I, I think, uh, a way to do that is perhaps, um, to look at the nomination sheets for this last year. In other words, we, we just, um, had approximately thirty-three changes. And so I think, you know, we have, at least that is an experience factor to see, so what happened this.
Right, that, I mean, I don't want exact, but I'm looking for training.
Right.
I want to see, because we, we always say, based on the current staffing and the current estimate, it's seven hundred, seven hundred, seven, whatever the numbers were over three years. The reality is, it's not that. You know, it's, it's likely less. So what's the scope and scale? Is it twenty percent less every year because of what we're doing? That's the level I'm looking for, not necessarily actual dollars, but that our actions to, by doing incentives and all those kind of things is having a positive effect on the bottom line over time. That's, that's the goal. Matt, does that, is that clear? Okay, if any questions, you can ping me for sure. Um, two other things, one Cindy touched on. We've heard several times about a lot of the, um, the transportation to athletics, as well as other non-athletic, um, situations where we have to, to transport outside of Merrimack in order to achieve fields or other locations like that. So I'd like, at the high school and middle school, or whatever schools are doing this transportation, to look at expanding what they budget in terms of transportation to include, uh, some of these areas where we must go offsite because of lack of local opportunity there, just what that increased cost would be. And then finally, um, this, this is actually related, I was at the, um, um, District Wellness Committee meeting today, and we were talking about, and you're likely will hear more over time around, um, um, the, the, um, I'm struggling with, the mental health committee has been working within the district for a long time, helping with the mental health and, and the, the, the opportunities with programs with, with students within the district. That's been the, the focus. Today, they started having a conversation about, um, support for staff, utilizing some of the same initiatives, some of the same opportunities and things. I'd like to see whether the, whether in this year, it makes sense to either budget, um, you know, whether it's, what, I'd like to, to include into this something around sort of teacher wellness initiatives in terms of what budgeting we could do for that to help with their situation. The example I'm going to use is, we have right now all the professional development days that are stacked at the beginning of the year, based on the way that we do the contract. Um, if we want to provide an opportunity for teachers around a, um, a wellness fair or some activity for that, if it would mean finding substitute teachers for the district for days, so that all the teachers could go for some sort of activity to help in this opportunity, I, as a, as a member of the board, would be interested in seeing that sort of, what a budget impact would be for that. So I'd like, it may not come up this year, but it's sort of the idea that I'm thinking is, we want to look out for the, for the health of, and, and mental, um, relief, if you will, for teachers as well as our, as our students. So, I don't know if that's clear or not, but these are just thoughts that are coming to mind as we go through the budget process.
Okay, um, and mine is a prepared statement. Um, so I wrote, uh, and it's actually, I hate to say it, but recycled from last year, because I, I read it in, in preparation for this and really enjoyed it. So I'm using it again. Um, I couldn't think of anything different that I would want to accomplish, so. Uh, to meet our mission of maintaining a productive and safe learning environment, we need a budget to maintain infrastructure and facilities, expand technology to meet student demand, and correlate expenditures with the goal of continually improving student performance. While achieving these goals, we need to be mindful of the tax burden of these expenditures and the size of the student population we are serving year over year. Are we in an incline or a decline in number of students served? Last year ended up being an incline. All, all items impacting safety of students, staff, and the community should be included in the operating budget. All projects that are important but not imperative should be identified, considered for warrant articles, so that the taxpayer can have input into its adoption. The budget should have detailed expenditure, so it presents the requests for funds in a transparent way for the board and our taxpayer base to be, to better understand the level of required funding it takes to operate the district. Finally, the cut list is as important to us as the budget. For those items that did not make the budget, please provide us a list and the plan to compensate for not having it. When cuts are proposed by administration or the board, please be ready to discuss the consequences of these cuts to, uh, the operation and educational outcomes. The budget should be accompanied by a detailed communication plan, so that those who want to weigh in on the process have the means to do so through productive channels. This communication plan should include press releases, so that we can get media coverage of the opportunities for our community to weigh in throughout the budget season, up to and including the deliberative session. And that's what I have. So with that, I think you have five individual. Oh, oh, four, four point, four point one. Sorry, I'm so used to starting at the end, but we, we did the, we did the freshman yield, so, Brandy?
Yes, okay, um, so mine, I apologize, I, um, it, it's a little on the lengthy side. So I will go ahead and begin, um, as the budget season approaches, a few questions for the administration come to mind. First, what could we be providing academically that budget constraints have not yet allowed for us to provide? And what are the short and long-term implications for students in the long-term budget? For each item, assuming there is any, it would be great to see a cost-benefit analysis from both a monetary perspective, as well as one from an academic perspective. Secondly, are there additional technology resources needed and/or how can we better leverage the technology that we have set in place to better communicate and teach with? What are the costs associated with updating existing technology versus adding additional resources that complement what we have currently? Are there communication tools that we can either secure or already have secured that can help streamline our communication, both internally as well as externally? If so, can we identify those tools and the costs associated with them? Lastly, where do we have a weakness in our current safety action plan? And what resources are needed in order to ensure our children's safety? According to CNN, in the first five months of two thousand and eighteen, there were sixteen K through twelve school shootings. That's sixteen too many in a five-month period. As we look to our budget season, I believe wholeheartedly that we need to create space in our budget to ensure our children's safety by being prepared for the worst. To this end, I would like to see additional training measures in place, additional ROs in each school, and a safety action plan for students, administration, as well as parents, to ensure that as a school community, we are prepared. I ask the administration to look at our current safety measures and provide some clarity on how much would be needed in order to take our existing safety action plan to the next level. With each budget season, there is inevitably a lot, list of items that will not make the cut for this budget, as other items will and should take priority. As such, it would be great to see a running wishlist of items by each school, so that our community is aware of the items that could not make it in the budget, a date stamp of when it was presented as a wishlist item, and how and why that item is needed or requested. It is important that our community understands that our job is to provide excellent education, while being mindful of any and all tax implications. That being said, there are some items that don't necessarily make it into the budget, but would genuinely be helpful in executing the academic excellence we are committed to providing. As we dive into the budget season, my only other request is that we revisit any areas in the budget that we may be able to save on or reduce spending on this upcoming year, without ramification to our student body or the education that they receive.
You were nervous about that, huh? Very well, thank you very much. So now all five have been rendered. Didn't get out, didn't, didn't get out of it. Um, so with that, we'll come up with a combined board message at our next meeting. We'll deliver that and provide that to you for your leadership team. So, and thank you all for the work that you did, uh, in, in preparation. Um, so we're on to item number seven, which is the New Hampshire School Board Association Call for Resolutions, two thousand nineteen. Um, we have Naomi as our delegate for the NHSBA as an officer. I cannot serve in that capacity, so I cannot vote. Um, so to that, um, we have this opportunity, if we feel that there is a, um, platform item we want to address at statewide level. Um, so we have a, a window to be able to do that, it's outlined in your packet. And we would absolutely, if you're interested, we would want it presented for the next meeting. Um, we did have one in our his, my history on the board that, uh, was put forward and it was actually adopted as written. And that was about parents opting in versus opting out. Or opting out versus opting in, I should say, my goodness. So, um, so on that note, um, that was adopted as a platform. When we do have those resolutions passed, it becomes a platform on which the NHSBA has the, um, authorization to represent us as a state. So it's, it's very important that we, we put forth something that's going to really be meaningful. So with that, if there's any resolutions, um, we can bring it up for our next meeting. On to item number eight, which is housekeeping, the approval of the September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept, made by Andy, second. Seconded by, uh, Brandy, just so I can get the rhyming thing going. Um, are there any edits to the minute? Cindy?
I wasn't here, so I'll be abstaining from the motion, but there is, I, I still have to get my two cents worth in, I'm kind of known for that. But, um, where it says not present, board member Gualyumi and student representative, uh, so, um, I would ask that you put that we are excused.
Thank you very much. Are there any other edits? Seeing them, I'll put the motion to vote, and I like the edit, so I'm just going to editorialize that. So, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none, abstain. Are you abstaining on this one? The motion carries four zero one with board member Gualyumi abstaining. We are on to item number nine, which is other. First correspondence, is there any correspondence to come before the board? Cindy?
Um, I had received a couple of, um, inquiries from parents regarding the transportation as it relates to sports, particularly, uh, to the GPS fields.
And I received one, uh, there's an event on October twentieth by a New Hampshire-based organization regarding budgets. So, um, is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none, are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, on to new business, are there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, committee reports, are there any committee reports from the board? Oh, Puzzo, guess Puzzo.
Uh, so, the, uh, homecoming dance and pep rally and football game were all last week, or well, three days ago, I guess. And, uh, we, we beat BG, which is pretty good. And then the pep rally and the dance went like really well, no, no like hiccups or anything. And, uh, then the Korean delegation from, uh, I forget the name of the school, but they're coming, uh, the October eighteenth, I believe. And our band is going to play for them, as they usually do, as we usually do.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? I see Cindy, wait, I'm leaning back on this one, Cindy and Andy.
Um, I attended a communications committee meeting, it was our first one of the season. Um, it was pretty straightforward. Um, basically what we did is we reviewed the last two years, some of the efforts, and some of the things, um, that have been done around the district. Uh, we discussed some other needs such as, um, social media, uh, managing that, um, as well as some next steps that include like school calendars, for example, um, what's that process that can be done to manage the school calendars? Um, there were a number of people on the committee that are also parents. And, you know, they had in, they had given some personal examples of, um, how there was miscommunication just from the calendars in general, where an event was there, then it was canceled, it wasn't taken off the calendar. So we thought that that was, um, an option that we might be able to improve on as a district. Um, but overall, what we talked about was, two years ago, we did a survey, um, that was really provided a lot of information to us in the district, and we talked about doing that type of a survey again. Um, and then the, finally, the other thing we acknowledged is that the survey results may be very much different, um, because technology continues to change. Um, people adapt, maybe that weren't open to texting, or, you know, some other online options might be more, um, open to those type of modes. So, um, all in all, I think a good first start to reengage the team, and I'm looking forward to some of the other items that come out of the committee this year.
And just a clarifier on your school calendars, you're talking about the school activities calendar that each school maintains for month to month, not the actual schedule of when we have days off.
That's correct, it's the one that has exactly that, and the fact, like one example, you know, was the high school where there's athletic calendars behind, you know, that was the one that I had given. Um, and then really, what's that process for maintaining those, so that we're providing the most accurate information to our community and to the, um, student, um, body and community.
Perfect, thank you. Andy?
So this afternoon, we had the first, uh, meeting this school year of the, um, of the District Wellness Committee. Um, I can only attend for the first thirty minutes, and that was the period of time when the, uh, Julia DeLuca presented, uh, to the Wellness Committee, um, sort of what the, the Mental Health Committee has done. And they started brainstorming some opportunities to be able to, um, have a partnership between the two committees, sort of as I alluded to earlier around, um, wellness for staff, or taking what some of the Mental Health Committee, uh, successes were. Uh, we talked a little bit about, um, you know, some of the, the things that we've done. I also, um, brought up the AOK program that Safeguard did, is something that might, they might be able to want to use, um, at the staff level, um, as well as some other opportunities. So, um, there were other things that we were going to talk about around, um, some funds around health, healthcare cost containment, and, uh, and, uh, healthcare, uh, sort of a planning for the, for the wellness fair that they wanted to start, but I wasn't there for that part, so.
Thank you. I had two, um, the Greater Woods Subcommittee met on the twenty-fifth of October. And there is right off of the school loop trail, a new outlook that one of our, uh, community Eagle Scouts built, uh, which is up and running and, you know, ready for use. Um, really well-done project, and we thank them very much. The outdoor classroom is about to, um, go under construction. So they're working on, um, redoing that, so it's technically on town land, but it's right off of our property, so it was used quite a bit from our, by our students when it was, um, operational. So it's looking to be redone in a very, um, you know, a sturdier way, I would say. And, uh, we look forward to that project. There's also another scout that's doing a series of benches throughout the property, I think four or five of them. And so they, they may, um, you may see those come up along school property as well. But, um, I've also, you know, as the school board liaison said that, um, you know, whenever the opportunity is needed to, you know, use the gate, make sure you communicate with the district, um, so that we know when you're going to be out there, and if for any reason you need to do something on a school day, if you're, you know, homeschooled or whatever, uh, because some of our scouts are, that, um, you know, they just communicate with the district, so we don't have kids on trails when you're going out on motorized, um, unit to take materials out. So, but, uh, they've always been very good, but just always reinforcing that message. Um, there's also, um, a fall walk that is being planned, um, out on the property to acclimate more people to it. It's close to six hundred acres, it's one of our biggest open space properties, it's bigger than Horse Hill, actually. And to that end, we want to make sure that there's, um, use of it, um, knowledge of it, and, uh, the different opportunities that that property gives us. And knowing that's so close to the middle school, that, uh, you know, students can absolutely feel familiar with it when they get to the middle school. And Parks and Rec has been a, a great partner with us to organize the communication plan to, uh, to organize those. And Parks and Rec has been a, a great partner with us to organize the communication plan to, uh, to organize those. So more to come on that. Uh, we also had the, um, New Hampshire School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting on the nineteenth. And the New Hampshire School Administrators Association will be attending our meetings going forward. Um, so that's very exciting for us. Uh, it's a great collaboration. Um, when you talk about how we work with our school administration, really the organization should be working the same type of, um, with the same type of dynamic. Quite often, uh, we're on, very in step with, with our goals as organizations, so wherever we can collaborate further to, you know, further, uh, skills and, and opportunities for the, uh, for the masses, we should do that. And the, uh, first robotics group came and presented, uh, for, from the state of New Hampshire. And there's definitely an initiative statewide. It's boomed statewide. There's, you know, funding that was provided. More funding is, was coming because of the amount of, um, enthusiasm that the, this robotics initiative by the state has come. Um, I know the Governor's Cup is October thirteenth, which happens to be my birthday, but also the same day as the PSAT. Um, but, so I think that our team has opted out because of the number of students.
Not enough people could go now.
Right. Because of the number of students that need to take the PSAT, because they need to, uh, prepare for college that way as well. So, um, first recognize that that was a bit of a conflict, and they are hoping to do better in the future with aligning those dates. But, uh, they do have twenty-one teams signed up so far for the, for the Governor's Cup, so, um, we definitely will be seeing more from that. It's definitely something coming from Governor's News Office. So we want to make sure that we're keeping up to date on what they're doing at the state and the resources available to us because of that. Those are my committee reports. Um, seeing no others, um, and seeing no public, we will open and close public comments on agenda items and take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Andy, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.